Good morning. My name is Marcy Stromgren and you've tuned into Just the Facts. I have in the studio today my guest, Jan Swanson, who is running for city council at large. Welcome, Jan.
Nice to meet you.
Good to have you here.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
We're going to talk a little bit, first of all, about yourself. And if you would like to tell the folks a little bit about your background and what you've done volunteering in the community, professional, education, what would you like to, first of all, do?
You know, I'd like to, first thing, I am a warranty representative for Kohler Toyota. I do their accounting schedules. So I have, before that, prior to that, I worked for Arrowhead Psychological Clinic. It's a Rule 29 clinic, state mandated, licensed clinic in the downtown Duluth. I was there for eight years and I was their finance manager. Prior to that, I was a technical, I worked for Worth Tackle for a couple of years doing sales. And prior to that, I was 10 years at Amsoil Incorporated as a technical representative.
Quite a varied background.
Yes.
Lots of experience that you could easily bring into the office. Okay, you volunteered from the list here. Would you like to mention a few of those organizations?
Yeah, ALS organization, Grandma's, every year. The reason I got into ALS is because I was working at Kohler Toyota. But I volunteered when they asked and they said, would you like to run the silent auction? And I said, I would love to run the silent auction. With that, I met Sandy Judge of the ALS organization in Minnesota. And it's a wonderful, it's a great organization. It's kind of, it's dear to my heart. Stephen Hawking, who I've read his books, suffers from ALS.
Oh, is that what he has?
Yes. There are a number of people, you know, that have this and it's debilitating. It's debilitating. And so that's the reason, I think, with Salvation Army, when I got a little older, my mom was a very big volunteer, charity person, very charity oriented. She was a nurse and she did a lot of clinics for doing blood pressure. I watched her doing this and I decided, you know, I think I need to do this. I think I really need to give back to the community. So I started to work doing, being a bell ringer for and getting involved in Salvation Army. Then Public Access. And I do, I know we don't do a lot of volunteering, but I help Kenny Callagher, who I'm married to, my husband, do PAC television camera work, production work for city council meetings. And it was through doing those city council meetings and reading the resolutions that I, after four years, decided I wanted to run for city council.
I think I can relate to that experience quite well. Only mine was with the school board.
Correct.
And you've got a little bit of varied background, education as well. Northwestern High School in Maple, like little small town down there in Wisconsin. And you went to the Duluth Business University, I see?
Yes.
I also went there many years ago. But any other things that you want to say about your education?
Well, I think growing to a small school, I, when I was very young, I went to a two-room school. I went to Cloverland Elementary and it had about maybe 20 to 30 kids.
Oh, my.
It was literally a two-room school in an office in a little gym between two pastures, cow pastures, in little town, in little lakeside town in Cloverland, Wisconsin.
The kind of farm country down there. I know where it is.
Yeah, 25 miles from Superior. And I grew up there when I was 18. I moved to, I moved to Superior and have been a Twin Ports resident. My, I mean, my whole life, I consider more like, living in Duluth and Superior is, it feels more home to me. I mean, even though I grew up in Maple. Going to DBU, I, for years, wanted to get a better education. My husband was laid off from the paper mill many years ago. And I decided I need to do something. He was in manufacturing and our manufacturing jobs are really hurting in this country. So I went back to school. I paid for it myself. I worked full-time. I went to night school and I got a, I was an honor student. So became an honor student and 4.0 GPA.
So you were working at the same time you were going to-
I was working full-time and paid for it and my student loans were paid off. I think it's important that, that education is vitally important in order to, to work, be goal-oriented. My, I didn't, I didn't like poverty. I wanted-
Well, we need an education to get a decent job and that is absolutely crucial today.
It's definitely, yeah. I wanted to better myself and I wanted to do this and I thought, you know, this is right, it's the right time.
Okay, so you basically stated that you monitored the city council meetings.
Yeah.
And so you heard firsthand what was going on. This is not just reading a newspaper. You've been there. And so what is your reason, after that inspired you, what then is your actual reason to, or reasons for wanting to be elected?
I think the reasons why I wanted to be elected was not so much to be a politician or go higher than city council or be a senator or anything. I think it was more responding to things that happen in, in the community, certain things. I've always been a person that wants to help from a young age. I think it started when I was about four, watching Watergate. And my dad used to tell me, you've got to come, come help your mother set the table. No water, no politics at the table. And I would, four, five, six years old and I was very like, we have to make this world a better place. I've always been this way. I became a CNA, I'm actually a licensed CNA in the state of Minnesota because I wanted to help. Going to nursing, it's, that's a tough kick. Nursing is difficult. I wanted to be like my mom. But I believe that my want to be on city council was, was working in government. I've been very active for years in different campaigns and I think this is where I wanted to gear my life.
So what do you think, what do you think are some of the issues? And maybe even, are we, do we have elected representatives that really, I mean, they sit there and they pay attention to what you say, but are they really listening to what you have to say? You say here that you wanted, you want to listen to and address the current concerns of all residents of Duluth. Some of those concerns are?
Oh, concerns. I think from working at a psychiatric clinic for so many years and as a case coordinator before manager. So as a case coordinator, I listen to people. A lot, the biggest concerns were crime, heroin epidemic, opioids. We had our pharmacy broken into many times with downstairs in the medical arts building, they were stealing meds to make drugs. I see it, my Lincoln Park neighborhood. I see a lot of, I see the rise in crime. And like I said, I've been here, I've been a lifelong, like, area resident, Twin Ports, and I've seen the progression, just more so in the last five to six years, with the rise in crime with, specifically with heroin. I think talking with Mike Tuscan, our chief, our new chief of police, Duluth PD, he has attended 710 meetings that I'm a member of. And also, I've spoken with him at CRC, which is another conservative watch group. And he's relayed to me that this has been something that has been growing more so in the last five years than prior. So I think it's something that really needs to be addressed.
Well, certainly, the, the rise is very visible. And, you know, I, I grew up in Piedmont Heights. I used to be able to walk through Lincoln Park without fear at night. I mean, my mother and dad didn't take me anywhere. I got there by my feet or I took the bus.
Exactly.
And my girlfriend lived 28th Avenue West and Third Street. I could walk to her place anytime, in the summertime, of course, you know, school's out, anytime in the evening, right through Lincoln Park or up 24th Avenue, whatever way I decided to take. And there was never any problem. There was never any fear of being able to do that. I would not allow, if I had a young daughter, I would never allow that to happen today because I know about the crime rate. And I also know a former business owner there who experienced a lot of problems before he moved his store out of the city of Duluth. So we know that's one of the issues. What about the streets? Certainly, that is a major problem.
Yes.
And I drive into Duluth from out in the country and I am just appalled at some of the roads I have to take. Now that they're on construction on Fourth Street, you have to take some alternative routes. They're pathetic to have to take those routes. So that seems to be a big issue, do you not think?
I think it's a huge issue. And, and like I said, last night, I was at a forum where we were talking about transportation equity. And, you know, I was thinking about our budget and thinking about the budget for the last 30 years in Duluth. Okay? So I've, in the last week, been reading our, the proposed budget for the city of Duluth for 2018. And I see, I think if we had been more fiscally conservative following up to this, our sewer system is a big example, that needs addressing. We're putting money back into our sewer and into that, into infrastructure because it's not fixed. So every winter, we have pipe bursts, we have, you know, the situation where, you know, we're just patching it, we're putting a Band-Aid on it. Okay? Now, if we were, we're going for another half percent sales tax increase, that's going to be proposed. I honestly believe that if we were more fiscally conservative with our general fund, they are stating that Parks Fund is different and that the streets, okay? But if we were more fiscally conservative with our general fund and our fund, you know, and our complete budget, then we wouldn't be in this situation. And I think our streets are bad. We've got sidewalks that are pulled up, vertical. There are sidewalks that are grown over on Central Hillside. I do photography, so I, I pay attention. Well, I'm out, taking pictures of Duluth, our beautiful city, from the hillside, from anger, and driving through and living, driving downtown, you see it and it's noticeable. I also noticed skyline. When I was growing up, skyline, you had a skyline. We don't have a skyline. I think our infrastructure needs to be addressed.
We have a problem on skyline because there's too many people that want to save all the trees.
Correct.
And so now we can't see anything because we're saving scrub trees such as popple.
Yes.
And there's this idea, you can't cut a tree down because it's growing there. Well, popple, popple will grow like weeds grow. And I think there needs to be some limitation on what we allow to be growing simply because that skyline, it's an attraction to come into Duluth and go on the Skyline Boulevard. It has always been that way. I've taken a class on the history of it and I used to live above it on Pied, in Piedmont. And you could see, you could see from just about every vista they had and that, it's not there anymore. But we are busy spending money on trails, we're busy spending money on bike paths and on the roadways, we're spending money on what I think should be private entities. I'd like your opinion on that, such as Spirit Mountain and the, and the aquarium. All that money that is supposed to bring in tourists and then they have to drive on the roads that we have, I think that our priorities are a bit imbalanced. And so do you have a plan or do you have some thoughts on what could be done about switching where those priorities go?
I think budget-wise, I think budget-wise, we, we have to look at what we have to have first. You know, in a house, you have a foundation, right? If your foundation goes, anything, crack in the basement or whatever, you've got to think of it as a house, right? You've got to fix those things first. Your sewer, your electrical, you have to fix those things first. If you want to go on vacation, you can go on vacation. If you want to buy a new car, what do you, you have to balance what you have to fix first. What's the most important thing? I think our police, I think fixing roads, streets, sidewalk, sidewalks. People have to walk those sidewalks. I grew up walking. I grew up, had a bike. I lived in the country. If I wanted to go anywhere, my dad said, you can, you can, when you get old enough, you can get a car, but you're going to have to. I had a bike. I rode bikes. I walked. This is vital. And I think that my, how addressing it and taking action on that is being accountable on resolutions and bonding on those agendas. Those city councilors get an agenda beforehand. You go through it. You talk with your constituents. You talk with people in the community. You get feedback from them. You've got to listen. And that's where I, my bullet point, my first point on my platform is listening to and addressing it. And it's not always, I don't, it's not fun always being fiscally responsible. You have to be like a parent. You have to, it's not always fun. It's, it's something that has to be addressed. It's not popular because people want things. You know, we want bike trails, but we have to fix our infrastructure first.
Well, I think the bike trails are great.
Yeah.
However, what I see on the bike trails is minimal compared to what I see on the actual street itself. And when we're having to miss potholes and, and go around up tarred and patched projects that have been there for years and years and years, I do believe the priorities need to be changed and we have to start looking at, like you said, we've got a, we've got a problem with the infrastructure. We can go back to 2012 flood.
Yes.
South St. Louis County Soil and Water is a pass-through organization for the money that came through the state of Minnesota. In other words, we got all that money to allow people to come to us and submit a claim from the damage of the 2012 flood. We are just finishing those contracts, but what do we do? We prioritize the most severe problems where people's whole half of their piece of property slid down into a ravine. Those were crucial ones that were addressed immediately. Now we're getting at the ones, I think we ranked them A through D. We're finally getting at the Ds. These are not something that can't wait.
Right.
So I see that in, in the governmental body that I am currently in and as a former township official, we basically did the same thing. Our, our first priority was the roads. That was our major, one of our major concerns. And those were taken care of. Once I got on the board and I looked at the condition the roads were in, I was appalled that they'd have been allowed to get into the condition they were in. And we don't have very many roads in Normanton Township, but that's what we took care of right away. That is absolutely crucial. People are on them every single day. And so I believe you're absolutely correct as we have to go for the infrastructure. And certainly in the 2012 flood, we were made well aware of how bad the infrastructure was because there was a lot of damage, a lot of undermining of certain areas where that bad infrastructure was totally revealed. And I don't know what the city did about it. I can't get into that because I don't live in the city and I don't follow it. Do people come to the city council meetings with their concerns on a regular basis? Do you find that true?
I find that they come when there's, we have a full house, when we have a situation where there's an immediate need for something. But in general, just watching it, sometimes, like on Agendonights, you have a few people, a handful. I think we need to really stress that if you have a concern, this is what the city council's for. Call your counselor, get ahold of them if there's concerns. Voice, make your voice heard. And getting back to the situation with FEMA money. I received a letter in February of this year. I was thinking about running for council and I got a letter from somebody that lived in the Lincoln Park district. It was a long letter and he basically said that he had studied the FEMA money trail for a couple of years and he finally said, I washed my hands of it. I want to, someone said that you were a fiscal conservative and that you were running. It was a gentleman. And I, he said, can you do something about this? I said, if I get on city council, then I, this is one of the concern, this is one of the things that I will do. Look into it, study it, and address it. That's what city councilors do.
FEMA, for those that don't know, is federally-
Yeah, it's federal, federal mandated money for, now, with the 2012 flood, we had, there was paperwork. It got passed around through, from what I, from the information I received from this gentleman, that he had met a wall on where the FEMA money was and he had contacted several offices, several people in, just different offices on the county level. And I basically responded to him, I'll do what I can. I am not a counselor right now, but I will look into it and I have. And now I'm going to be following up on that because we need to find out what happened with that. I'd like to research more on it. It's always, I'm always researching, so.
Well, FEMA money is different than the money that we receive through Soil and Water.
Correct.
That was totally, yeah, that was federal. We got state monies for-
But I think that what happened is that this money did go to, we have, it's FEMA money, but it goes through the St. Louis County and through the city. This with Lincoln Park would be through the city. But I have contacted different people because that money has to get to our city. So he contacted Parks and Rec and the different departments to find out what happened.
And was he looking for money then back during-
He was just one, he was a concern.
From the flooding back then?
Yes.
So that, that should have been taken up with the county or with the city council and they did not take care of it for him.
And they did not take care of it. And that's, I'm just going off of what he's telling me. And I have his name and, and, yeah, so I think-
People need to have, people need to know where to connect.
Yeah.
And they need to know, most people are really ill-educated when it comes to where to go and who to ask questions of. And so it's important for them to realize they need to come to the city council first and if they don't, if they don't have the answers, then say, would you please give me somebody who I can go speak to?
Yeah.
And, and that's what your city council is all about. And so you need to be listening and you need to say, let me, let me help you with that. That's what your responsibility is as an elected official. So you also have down here, provide accountability and fiscal responsibility for our taxpayers with a checks and balance system. Can you tell me more about how you could implement or what you mean by that?
I think doing the finance management for a, for a private company, I haven't worked for a nonprofit. I've been in the private sector always. When you work in the private, private sector and you do accounts receivables and payables and you're looking at credentialing with doctors, budgeting, when you see this and when you see businesses struggle, we had some hard times, when you see that, you see the other end of what businesses see. You see what, how they're trying to make sure that their employees are getting paid. If the, if the electrical bills, you know, just a variety of things, you have, you have to make sure that you are profitable. For families, when you're responsible for, I was responsible for those doctors and their families, you see the other end of it. What I'm afraid of is that if we aren't, if we don't have a checks and balance system and we go over budget, then what happens is, is we have to go through referendum to get a half percent sales tax increase because we are short on our budget. And we're actually $3.16 million short for 2017.
Ooh.
Yeah, and I, it's actually in the information that I received from the city administration on the 2018 levy and general fund budget. So I went through it and read it and, and that's what I'm talking about when I, state provide accountability and fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers.
Do you think, I've often thought this, do you think that government agencies should be run more like a business? Because we are accountable to the taxpayers-
Yes.
-as elected officials. We're spending their money. And as a business owner, I know exactly what you're saying. You can't keep a business going. I mean, I can keep raising my rates for my, for my business and they're going to go someplace else and find a cheaper rate. We can't do that in, in the city or in the county or townships. One thing about townships that's really much better than any other level of government, on the annual meeting, we have to put together a budget and the people that come to that meeting tell us whether we're going to be allowed to have that budget for that year or not. They are directly accountable to the taxpayers in that township. And they question, why are you doing it this way? Couldn't we do it that way? And then it's discussed. And we built, we took an old building that had a Bay Area for the fire trucks. And with the help of a very astute man financially and building-wise, that Bay Area was turned into a now empty space because we built a new fire hall. And we didn't take a loan out for very long. I think it was less than five years. But when we rebuilt the Bay Area and turned it into new meeting rooms, we did not owe a thing. We did not take a loan on it at all. It was around $40,000. But we had fiscally put away the money on a regular basis-
Yes.
-for many years. So by the time we had a plan put together and went ahead and did it, got lots of volunteer work, lots of donated stuff, and we got it put together. And it's a very nice facility. It's not elaborate, but it meets the needs of the community. And I think every single level of government has to think about, you're responsible to these taxpayers and you should be running this in a business-like manner so that you are not always asking for more money. The pie is only so big.
Correct.
You divide that pie up into all these different things, parks and recreation, entertainment, roads, infrastructure, salaries, all of these different things have to come out of that pie. And the only way to get a bigger pie is to ask for more money, which is continually being done in this city. And I remember when they first put that sales tax on, that it was temporary. I don't remember how many years ago that was, but it's never been temporary.
It's never been temporary. And we were at, now, currently we're at 8.375. Now with this half percent, it's, it will be 8.875 is what it will amount to, 0.5. So now, I think we are one of the highest in the state of Minnesota. And in the country, we're in the top, I think, fourth or fifth or, and then if you look at corporate tax, that's 12%. Corporate tax in the state of Minnesota, corporate tax, tourism tax is 12%. Corporate tax in the state of Minnesota is 9.8, one of the highest in the country, again. So this is because we have a tax and spend policy. When you talk about economics, I've read many books on economics. I started doing it when I was in my late twenties. There's Austrian and Keynesian. And most people that take economics classes in college understand the difference between Austrian and Keynesian economics. Basically, Keynesian is more of a tax and spend. The thought process, like with the Obama administration, and I don't want to pick about, you know, Democrats and Republicans, I'm just saying, for instance, in their administration, they practice a tax and spend policy. The feeling or the idea behind that is if you spend money, you'll generate revenue. Okay? Now, that over and over and time and time again, in certain administrations, it can be either, doesn't matter if it's, you know, if you practice tax and spend, you're not, over and over again, if you look at the studies, you don't generate revenue. In this past administration, it was 10 point, I think it was 10 trillion. And now, at the end of his administration, it was 21 trillion. So it has doubled. That policy, they wanted to in 2007, they wanted to, you know, we had our boom and bust, we had our bust cycle. And the, the thought process with the federal government was, we need to invest, we need to invest, we need to spend and tax and spend. With our city administration, now, we are $3 million in debt. we are $3 million in debt. So we have to do something different. We need to... I want to be positive about this. I don't want to be negative. I want to be... I'm empathetic to the taxpayers. When I hear neighbors say, "I can't afford my taxes this year. They've gone up $800 or whatever." For somebody that's struggling with children and car payments and electrical bills and raising electrical fees that like the city is going to be raising, 28.2% in six years.
Oh, my goodness.
This is the... This is... That's a cumulative, and it is going to be 28.2 in six years. I think we need to really take a look at this at a larger level and then decide where we want to go.
I can't agree more. It's common sense, which I think there's a premium on that today.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, you did mention our chief of police. And you've been with him on different... In different places. How can the city council work more with law enforcement and other community partners to address the growing epidemic of heroin and opioid-related issues? You touched on that briefly, but can you give me a little bit more information on that?
You know, when I worked for Arrowhead Psychological, I worked with the Center for Chemical Dependency. I worked with Miller Dwan, Mental Health. We had people that were ordered into therapy that had issues that would have to report to parole officers. I worked at St. Louis County and probation and the police department to make sure that they were coming in. So I had a hands-on, face-to-face, hands-on, I guess, interaction. So I was... Had a better understanding of it. Now, running for city council, I can... One of the things I think we could do, after talking with Mike Tusk, and he said, "You can't arrest your way out of an opioid epidemic." We can keep putting money into our police department, and we need that. We need to catch the large... Go after the large dealers. We have to do that. By doing that, then we don't... It doesn't spread. Okay? When you bring... And it's endemic... It's an epidemic across the Midwest. It's not just us. It's Des Moines, Iowa, and Chicago, Illinois. It's Twin Cities. They're all feeling this in the Midwest. And I think one of the ways that we can curb this is by having programs to integrate police with the different rehabilitation centers. But I think my main concern is the crime rate. We have got to go after crime. That would be my top priority.
Well, certainly with drugs.
Yes.
Of any kind, the crime rate goes up. But it's my understanding, and I... Correct me if I'm wrong. Many of these people that are now using heroin were using, do I want to say softer drugs, some of which, for pain mediation, prescribed by doctors.
Correct.
And I firmly believe, and it seems like now we're starting to see a little shift. I did hear something on this not too long ago. But I think we need to sit down with the medical profession.
Most definitely.
And find out why we don't use different treatments. Why are these people turning to stronger and stronger medication forms of terrible drugs like heroin?
Right.
So what's your thoughts on that?
My thoughts on that is we had... The clinic that I worked at, a lot of the... Many of the doctors there worked on getting... We have too many pharmaceuticals. We have too many people using painkillers, opioids. That need for that after... It's extremely hard. And a lot of people do take pain meds. I think there is a progression. So if you're on them for a long time and you, you know, you're dealing with your doctor... I don't like the idea of general practitioners prescribing so many of them. We're creating a real problem with our... The pharmaceutical industry has to be more... I mean, they're there to... They're going to sell the drugs, okay? Now, the doctors... If we could make them more responsible and interact, working with doctors, working with different doctors. You have some people that are on 15, 20 different, you know, drugs. And so it's devastating your life. How do you even manage getting weaned off that? What's happening is that people are... They're going to heroin because they have nowhere else to go. They're going to the streets, which is something we have to address. It's just got to get addressed.
Well, it's kind of interesting. Just the other day, Jan, one of our tenants is finally getting his life straightened out. He's had some issues with drugs, and he's struggled. And he's clean right now. And it's just so good to talk to him and asked him how he was doing. And I said, "You know, I remember hearing many years ago that your father had a drug problem." I said, "Was that before your mom?" And he got married. And he said, "Yeah, it was when he was young." He said, "He did heroin, and it almost killed him." And that was it. At that moment, he decided, "I'm not doing this anymore." So everybody does not need a drug treatment center. And I do believe too much of this is man-centeredness. And so, you know, there is... There's a way. And I know we have a very good program here, Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge, that has helped many, many, many... I mean, thousands of young people, both men and women, in their struggle to get off of drugs. And some of those were put on because of pain.
Yes.
And so it can be done. But I don't... I don't see a big push in this community to utilize the resources and the information that Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge has to offer. And quite frankly, there's an adversity to their particular mythology of doing it, which I don't need to mention that right now. But nonetheless, they are successful. Their return rate is about... Well, I think it's between 75 to 85%. It could be higher, but I remember those figures.
All right.
So what about private entities such as Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge? What about pulling them into this mix and getting their advice on how we can curb this? Because it is ruining lives.
It is.
It's not only ruining the life of the person that is doing the drugs. This young man I was talking about, he's divorced. Both him and his wife were doing the drugs before. She's now clean for two years, and he's been clean for the last several months. But it destroyed that family.
Definitely.
And how many families is it destroying? How many grandparents are taking care of their kids today? And I hear this over and over. Because the parents are not responsible. They're doing drugs and what have you. It's not affecting just the user. It's affecting a community. And it's bringing in... And I saw this when my children are growing up. They're adults now, many years. And we used to work down at the Damiano Center. And I saw young people... I found out where they were from, Chicago. We knew that what they were here for. You knew that they were drug dealers. That's not a new problem to Duluth. It's been around for a long time. The heroin? I think the heroin has, like you say, blown up in the last five to six years.
Yeah, statistics show that that's the case.
Yeah. But how can we do something different than what we're doing? I mean, we just keep using the same people over and over. Why don't we try something different that's been successful?
You know, I think in the last, I was saying, 10 years, what I saw was a lot of people coming in to the clinic that were court-ordered or through St. Louis County were told that if you go in, you get therapy, then we can help you get on, you know, you can get assistance and things like that. I think the... I saw a lot of people coming in so that they can get on assistance. And then coming in and basically coming in for years. Okay? We have a very lenient mental health program in the state of Minnesota, which is good to a point. But, you know, compare... If I can compare TRICARE, for instance, military, with the amount of sessions that they get per year versus Minnesota Medicaid. A person on Minnesota Medicaid can get 26 sessions per year. A person that's in the military with TRICARE and their medical, it's eight sessions per year.
My goodness.
Yes. So what's happening is that... And I don't think a lot of people realize this. We have a situation where people are coming in, and they're not... I don't know if they're just not getting the help that they need. And it's nothing against the providers. You know, the providers are there to help. But when we feed the system where we have people, we have a community, we have... I'm very empathetic. But we have to make sure that we're watching the money that is coming. We have to make... We want the funding. We need to be able to help people. But we can't have a system where we are...
Where they're abusing it.
Where there's abuse. There's a lot of...
That's abuse.
Welfare abuse.
But if it's allowed by the system to begin with...
It feeds itself.
What's the problem? The problem is not the people abusing it. It's the people who are...
Governing it.
Governing it. And that needs... That mindset needs to change.
Yeah, mindset needs to change. We need to get people back to work. The work programs are great. We have a work program in Lincoln Park. You know, if we could utilize it, if we can get them to get on those programs and lift yourself up by your bootstraps. If we have a positive mentality about work, if we have a positive mentality, nobody wants to... I don't. Growing up, I was taught that you should have goals, better yourself. It makes you... You'll be a happier person, much more productive. We need productive members of society. And, you know, I've been in poverty. I grew up with nine brothers... Eight brothers and sisters. I was one of nine kids. My parents were blue collar. They told me, "If you work hard enough, you know, you can become something. You can have the thing." This is what we need in our community. We need to have a positive way, a positive outlook, and turn it around. These work programs, decreasing drugs in our community, doing these things. I think this is where I would really like to do positive things on city council. I think this is where I could be different, make better changes.
I would have to agree. Let me just ask you this. Eight siblings commending... Are your parents still alive?
No, my dad... My father passed away in 1991. He was a World War II vet. He's a railroad guy. Had a well-drilling business. Mom was a nurse. Twenty-plus years at Superior Memorial. She was a wonderful woman. She made sure that we were in church on Sunday, that we, you know, just were... Had the best, normal family. And they taught us work ethic. We had chores. They taught us to be a good neighbor, to be empathic and just be friendly and treat people with respect and be good members of society. And I think I take that small-town values, and I want to bring it to our city council. I think we've lost that in our society. And I think we really should think about bringing this back. I see Duluth 20 years from now, and I'm hoping that we don't go on a downward spiral. I would hope that we could have a positive future and bring businesses and larger businesses back to Duluth. And the way we're going to do that is by being more fiscally responsible and not pushing businesses away. We need to draw them here. We need to clean up our streets, make it beautiful, make it productive.
And make it safe.
And make it safe and bring more jobs here.
Well, as a business owner, I've looked at the business climate. Of course, I saw it after I got into business. In the state of Minnesota, it's difficult. But I would not... After speaking with a business owner, I would not ever look at a building to renovate for storage within the city limits of Duluth. I refuse to come into the city limits of Duluth. I will find another facility if I choose to expand in another township area or another city, but not within the city limits of Duluth. Simply because of that firsthand account of how difficult it was to keep a small business running. And that should be a wake-up call to anybody that's currently on the city council munking around with increasing more taxes just for tourism sake. I mean, this is a very diverse area. There's room for industry as well as for tourism. And I think that the vision of the city council has been very narrow for too many years. It's not just a recent situation. It's been that way for too many years. We've seen good businesses move over across the bridge. And we've seen them just fold up and close their doors because they can't afford to stay in business with the climate the way it is. And so what you're having to say overall, this touches all citizens. It touches whether you're a business owner or whether you're someone that goes to that business, a customer. It touches every aspect of how we operate as a functional city. And I commend you for offering yourself up to take on this. And I know what it's like. And it's not an easy task to want to run where there's such opposition to what you're having to say. But I do hope that your message will be loud and clear to them. I think we pretty much covered the last point there on supporting and promoting business-friendly environment.
Definitely.
We still have a few minutes left, Jan. You had some information you shared with me before we got started
Yes.
on the fiscal picture. Would you like to talk about that?
You know what? I was reading this this morning. You know what, I was reading this this morning, I've been, I've had it for uh since August fourteenth. I've read through it.
And what is it exactly?
Basically, what this is, is this was um sent to me in an email from our our mayor Emily Larson. City of Duluth, it's the proposed twenty eighteen levy and general fund budget, and it says shared sacrifice for the greater good. And I was just, my glasses on for a second, um I was, and I do this with my agendas and my resolutions. I was, I, what I do is I write notes. I look at resolutions, I write notes, and I go back over and I look at it and. And I, there are a lot of notes in here um that I've written, and basically they have a pie chart. There's a part in here that they have an eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollar withdrawal from our general fund to invest as a commercial tenant. For the community solar garden of Minnesota Power. Um and it says, the interesting thing, it says, we are in the process of finalizing, finalizing terms allowing the city of Duluth to enter. Into an agreement by which we are estimated to save a conservative two million dollars for the city over twenty-five years. So the math. There's an eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollar withdrawal from our general fund from this bu, for this budget in twenty eighteen, which is almost a million dollars. And I think it says our investment is a, to save a conservative two million dollars over the course of twenty-five years. Okay, uh that's just one thing, um there's a number of things in here, um I'm looking at school board budget. Also, healthcare, healthcare is the single most volatile factor that we have, uh that we can predict, and it has real impact. Annual healthcare cost increases have averaged eight percent since two thousand and twelve. Well, if you look at the year that Obamacare went into effect, it was twenty thirteen. For twenty eighteen, uh premium rates are expected to increase ten percent. I think if we. This is going to be devastating in in the next couple of years if we don't. Uh if our fed, if our federal government uh doesn't figure out a way to, this is going to be devastating. With our baby boomers growing, uh their age, okay?
I'm part of that.
Compounding, yes, and I'm right on the tail end, I'm right outside of it, born in nineteen sixty-six. Um so I, I I think about the multiplication and the math, and this is going to be hard to sustain. So we have to, now more than ever, we have to be more fiscally responsible, responsible is the word.
I would say that that is, now let me ask you this. Is the city of Duluth paying totally into their healthcare fund like they do? There's very little, as I recall from in in the school board, watching them. They pay very little, minimal amount, is that what's the city does as well?
I think, work, being a clinic manager, my specialty was medical billing and coding, I'm a certified coder in the state of Minnesota. When you look at, what I learned from the clinic was that you have group plans. So you have uh each company that you work for, Minnesota Power or. Uh let me see, um you know, the Saint Louis County, the federal, the, you have federal, if you're a federal worker. Um I was looking at the deductibles and coinsurance and copay, and it was in about two thousand and thirteen. Eleven or twelve, I saw a shift. In deductibles, the standard deductible for most plans was two hundred and fifty dollars. Our paper mill for it, for example, um it was um a two hundred and fifty dollar, twenty percent coinsurance. That's, um it was pretty standard back in the nineteen nineties, um you know, starting in nineteen ninety-six. That's when they, two hundred and fifty, that was the standard. It went, in two years, I saw this across the board with these group plans, that it would, was going to two thousand five hundred and then five thousand. When I spoke with an insurance company, a major insurance company, I asked the head of claims, what's the reason for the spike? Because I have to patient bill, I have to send those bills, I have to send a bill to somebody that's going to be a thousand dollars. Can you explain to me why the deductibles have gone up? And they said, because of the cost of healthcare and this and this change, the AJ. I see insurance companies making a lot of profits, and I see people um suffering. Because they're having to come up with money to pay for this, it's, 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 it's changed a lot, and it's. I just think there, it's, it's. This ten percent increase is going to be tough, and so.
I think uh just briefly, I would say that um. I I think another direction that the city council or any entity needs to look at is, we need to look at preventative. Uh health measures, uh we have too much um junk food. That does horrible things to the body, and I can tell, to talk from a nutritional, partially trained nutritional consultant. Perspective in forty-odd years of raising a family and and looking at things that way. That's something that the city council really should be taking a look at, simply because they are paying out enormous amounts of money. For people's healthcare costs, which affect the taxpayers by the raising costs. For. Taxes to pay for this, so I think that's another issue. We just have a few minutes left, uh if you can just give me a real quick summarization of. Maybe one other little issue that, or one other issue that you have there.
I I just think that, what I would really, how I'm different, this is how I'm different, I'm nonpartisan. I think we're bringing up too many things on a national level into our city council meetings. I think we have enough, we had a city council meeting where um people came in, there was an issue that was outside the area. Didn't directly relate to something like maybe mining, where it's going to, it's going to hit us, because we have a shipping industry. That I can see, but when you bring out issues into a city council meeting where uh it's taking up four hours. And we're not getting to things like our budget, or just things like on our um, on our resolutions, on the agenda, I I have a copy of here. Of you have different resolutions we have to go through, and you've got pages, and you've got to go through each one of them. I think we, if we concentrate, and I want to make people aware that I'm really want to get back to. Working directly with our taxpayers and our citizens and our neighbors and being. Doing my best to be our brothers and sisters keeper, being a good and having that ear and listening to people's concerns.
Well, you know, I, you hit on something that's near dear to me. What is necessary to be discussed at a, at a city council meeting. Should be emphatically stated at the beginning of the meeting, so that that time is not wasted on an issue. That the city council has no business dealing with, and I've seen this happen over, you know, maybe the last ten years. Where people come to a county board meeting, a city council meeting, or. We, it happened in the township, and we would just say, I'm sorry, that's not something we deal with, here's where you need to go. So direct the people where they should be going, but when you have bleeding hearts that are willing to listen to everything that anybody's got to say. And not uh stipulating what the perimeters are of your position. Obviously, they don't know what their position is all about, or they want to expand on their authority. And I appreciate the fact that you brought that up, Jan, because that is crucial, we, I've seen the city council dealing with things they have no business dealing with. So I just want to thank you for coming in here and spending time, I know that you've put time into all the research that you've done. And that's crucial, if you're running for any position, it's absolutely crucial that you do your homework. And now you have some homework to do with listeners, you have a responsibility to yourself and the future of this community. And that is to go to uh your election uh area. You can find out where it is from the city council, I mean, excuse me, the city clerk's office, and go and vote. Make a wise choice, listen to all of the candidates, read the information, call them, find out. That's your responsibility, we live in a country where we have the privilege to vote. And it's important for you to get out there and choose those who are going to best represent you. In the coming years, remember, it's your tax dollars, and it's your voice in the community. So, appreciate again your coming in, Jan, and thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you.